You're not in the cold seat.
Well, I'm not. Maybe you were taken.
That's not very nice. Either way, that's very nice to hear. You need...
Good, how are you?
You know, I think the only bear that is from...
You're laughing at me?
We're voting like a second to one.
Yes, yes. Every day, we're talking about it.
Where... Where... Where...
Me? What? I might be sitting down here.
I'm taking a nap, too.
And...
So, does this mean you're... You're next to it?
Yes.
Most possible. Okay. I don't think it's bad. I know something that was considered. I looked at others. I want to picture.
Coming through the ceiling.
That's looking really nice up there.
Yeah.
If you guys could just agree on some directions.
They signed that, and he says it was still in process.
See, I hope the roof is where the money comes from.
Ah, so you got something picked out, huh?
We've got any range. Okay, quite different. From like thirty-five hundred to twenty-five.
Oh!
I can say this is rare.
Yes, we're going on a lower range.
I'd like to see.
Middle road, yeah?
Yeah. It's commercial law. It's whatever. Because I'm just having a little look for a lot of things. It's commercial law.
Right, everybody. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming to the meeting tonight. Glad we got some rings on the drums. In here, it makes you answer. Praise God for that. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Louise Zyste?
Here.
Rick Tolls?
Here.
Martha Frank?
Here.
Linselane?
Here.
Rachel Smith?
Here.
Jody Downsby?
Here.
Got our approval of our minutes for a regular meeting held on September eighth, 2025.
I make a motion to accept the minutes recorded for a meeting held on September eighth, 2025.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of our minutes. Any questions? And the questions will be approved as presented. Got approval of our bills in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents dated September fifth through September eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills from September fifth through September eighteenth, 2025, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of our bills. Any questions?
I have some questions on the bills. Can't take thirteen hundred dollars. Says for a water tap. Chad, what is that for?
A water tap.
And could you explain that a little bit? Where was it okayed? Why did we need it? Did we get any quotes? Is that the average cost?
It's out in Williamsburg.
Did you get a warranty on it?
It's for... The homeowner pays for it. It's out in Williamsburg. It's a lot easier than us digging because there's... There's electrical, gas line, and our water mains below all three of them. So, it's just safer. And you don't really need a warranty because all we're doing is type us a dig. We're doing a water tap.
So, there wasn't one there before?
No, it's a new house.
New house, okay. And is that the average cost?
Yeah.
And is that a supplier we use regularly?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the Fowler Farm Aqua Master, two hundred and nine dollars. What's that for?
We can...
And where are you using that at?
Along the ditches in the river.
Is that the one I asked you for the MSDSG?
Yep, it's at the office.
Okay, so are you going to provide that to me?
It's at the office.
So, you want me to go to the office and get it?
Yeah.
And are you open? Or do I need to schedule an appointment to get this document?
If you're there between regular business hours, you should open this.
Okay. Uh, Kleinfelder, eight hundred and five dollars, master meter upgrade.
Yep, put me back flowing at the King Road Master Meter. They're just finalizing some stuff. You're getting quotes. You should be getting quotes for us. No.
So, this isn't for parts, it's for service?
No, it's for we had to upgrade the master meter down at King Road for the water service for town.
And what's the eight hundred and five dollars we're paying for then?
Um, we already signed a contract with them, I think it was four or five years ago.
It's for engineering. Okay, so service is so far. And what's the estimated cost on that project?
I don't know, you haven't got quotes.
And what made you think we needed an upgrade there?
Uh, willing to state that we need one.
Good. And annual flood insurance, sixteen hundred and one dollars. Uh, just for the town hall, correct? Uh, do we carry any flood insurance on the old fire station?
Yes.
And that's a separate policy?
Correct.
Okay. And is our flood insurance... It looks similar to what it was last year, but do you know that?
The cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very similar to last year.
And is that for the full year or half?
It's an annual fee, so it's a full year.
Okay. Um, Frontier Landline, five hundred dollars seems a lot for a landline. Uh, is that landline and internet or what is that?
It's four phone lines. The sheriff's phone line, it's our alarm service, it is our office phone, and it's our fax line.
Four phone lines, alarm service, what else? Fax?
Fax, yep.
And was that it? Office?
Sorry, I can't shut that off.
Um, where is it we know? Ohio Asphalt Paving, seventy-five hundred and twenty dollars.
But it's for the water, or your... And then for his driveway and for the catch basin on, was it Third Street?
Okay, and so you're finished with all of that?
Yeah.
And did we get any other quotes on it?
Nope, got it done as fast as I could.
And then, um, ECO, sixteen hundred and eighty dollars, full water system annual support. What is that for?
I guess if you have questions or something goes wrong, they can help us try to fix it.
So, it's a...
Service.
Customer service we're paying for? Okay, thank you.
Is this, um, wrong key, the park dumpster, is that what it was? Is that like the last one, I think?
It should be this, yeah.
Thank you.
So, what about the dumpsters for the Apple Butter Fest? Are those... How are those, um, paid for?
Through the fest.
The historicals is that?
Oh, the historicals is... And we may keep that... We keep that park dumpster there through the apple water. So, we...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
With no other questions, we'll proceed with the vote for the thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents through September fifth through September eighteenth bills.
Uh, Louise Zyste?
Yes.
Linselane?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are... Joe, are you here for this?
Chamber? Yeah.
For Christmas?
Yeah, Christmas, all the masks.
Okay.
Less than a hundred.
I think we all have a copy of the application in front of us for the Christmas open house. I wondered on the row, it says ten AM to eight AM.
I want to say eight AM, sorry.
You don't need any additional parking, twenty-five hundred people coming possibly?
I mean, just with public parking? Sounds like... That's over two days, so...
Does it do the jury's form or nothing like that?
No. Just public parking is typically sufficient.
I'm sorry?
The public parking is typically sufficient.
Okay.
And there's no road closures requested, so there's nothing that comes... No loss of parking spaces through that?
Yeah.
It reads as it did last year, Joe?
I'm sorry?
It reads as it did last year? No real changes to it?
Um, no. No real changes. Uh, we'll have live reindeer, but that'll be actually on Prager Property, so, um, that's really the only issue that's different. Um, we do the trackless training that we had for Rapids Rally Day. They'll be here for Christmas open house as well, too. So, um, they'll be running a similar route to what the carriage rights run.
No food trucks?
No food trucks.
So, what is the route?
Um, it is Front Street to Mel Street, uh, down the alley behind, and then they load at the mural courtyard along Beaver Street, and then go back up Front Street, um... Back up Front Street to West Street, back down the alley Beaver, and then just kind of they crisscross on Beaver Street. So, this way and then that way, so...
So, the alleyway this references is on the south side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where were the trackless train run?
Same route.
Same, same.
Yeah.
But last year, it grew.
We haven't had that for a few years for Christmas open house, so...
Yeah. And they had it for, was it earlier in the year?
We had it for Rapids Rally Day.
Rapids Rally Day.
Yeah.
I think they went down the toll path, I think.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they crossed the bridge and went down the toll path.
I wasn't... I was out of time for a funeral on that Saturday, so I didn't see what they were doing on Saturday.
I will make a motion to approve the application for use of public property for nonprofit organizations. Sponsoring organization being the Grand Rapids Area Chamber of Commerce for their Christmas open house, November twenty-second and twenty-third, from ten AM to eight PM.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of the application for Christmas open house for 2025, eleven twenty-two, twenty-five through eleven twenty-three, twenty-five. See with the vote?
Uh, Linselane?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Louise Zyste?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'll second.
Much appreciated.
Yep, thank you. Okay. I am right here if you're right now. Um, I know you boys are here for Mrs. Danko's class.
The young lady as well.
And yes, and I'm wondering if you have any questions or anything, or just observe? Just observe?
Please don't make us talk.
You can bring up your notes and we'll sign them for you.
Okay. Um, I actually have one thing I put here is, uh... I'm going to schedule a meeting with the engineer that I've been talking about, um, to look over the town, uh, information that they've got that I supplied to them for different things for the village, try to enhance it, and, um... Give us a future of which way we should go, or what would be best for us. And we're not under any obligation with them, but, um, it's something they can give a presentation on and see if we like it, and we'll go from there. I'll let you know when it's convenient for them and for all of us to, uh, attend it and see it, and go from there. Town Hall looks really nice. Sure, just boosted up, just painting the walls. Not even print, just the walls. Get the peeling paint from coming down anymore. And the comedy club performer, Michael McDaniel, he was, uh... He was fun. Had a good time listening to him. That's it for right now. Who wants to hear a report, Chad?
Okay, um, the transducer did get put in at Brick Street Love Station. Um, we got that done Wednesday. I did ask about a warranty. He said it's a one-year warranty from a supplier that covers defects in materials and workmanship. That's the one warranty on it.
About for you one, what's the use of life of that?
Uh, he didn't really tell me. We got seven years, I think, of the last one.
Can we buy an additional warranty on it?
I can... I can text or email tomorrow and see. I just probably let the suppliers off here for a day or two.
Hi.
Hi. Um, someone took the fire I dropped behind the bank over here. I'm going to try to get some quotes and get it fixed. I'm waiting on the accident report, too, so I can get all the insurance, try to get insurance claim on it. Uh, hopefully get it fixed before the Apple Butter Fest. And as John said, the town hall is done. Um, he's asking for three thousand additional dollars for additional work you put in, which you put is scraping, scaling, and skimming. So, the original quote was for twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. He's asking for thirty thousand, five hundred. It's something you guys can talk about and figure out if you want to pay me.
Was that for scraping, scaling?
And skimming.
Skimming. Sewing?
No, you're going to do the sewing. Um, the traffic study was done last week on the eighteenth. I haven't heard anything back from you yet, but I did see him put the camera up. So, hopefully we get that back pretty soon. Um, I did talk to the park about the kayak launch. I'm waiting here back from. He was not in the office when I stopped out there, I did. And then for the carb reader that you asked about when, there's a ninety-day warranty on it, and they said that carb reader will probably outlast the actual machine that we have up there. And then you talked about which part-time employees can't be promoted to full-time status. So, I actually have the rules from the employee handbook that's still... We're still using today and does say part-time employees who are promoted to full-time status will receive years of service credit on a prorated basis for vacation purposes. So, that tells you that you can take a part-time employee and promote them to full-time status.
Does it also say that you need to post jobs? And you have job descriptions?
No, not where I saw it, does not.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I have to know.
I have a question for you. Last time we asked you about the Army Corps of Engineers report that Peggy provided you. Have you done anything with that?
Not yet, no.
And what's your intention on that? Like, what kind of timeframe can we expect for you to review and...
Um, I'm working on it. I have to read it, read it over.
Okay. So, you've had it quite a while now. Might be beneficial before we go into the budget planning for you to take a look at that.
Chad, I had a couple, um, phone calls. One was in regards to the bathrooms at Lincoln Street not being cleaned.
Yeah, um, Jeremy worked this past weekend. He said they did not come in. Uh, I think Crystal was going to email him that she did that.
So, that was one of them. And then the other one I got just before the meeting, um, Joe Long had contacted me and said that he saw on the front right side of the town hall one of the slates, like, hanging.
All from the roof?
Right. And so, I... He said that, um, the church that he goes to uses the durable slate company out of Columbus, but he said Ohio Restoration in Toledo might be able to assist as well. So, I turned my passive information on to you.
Okay, Ohio Restoration. Okay.
And also, Chad, um, does Randy consider himself being done upstairs?
Uh, as far as I know, he was. He gave us a final bill, and I don't... I haven't been out there to look.
There's some touch-up. I think that the, uh, paint tape was locked on too long, and when they pulled it off, pulled paint off, it's quite obvious. I think there is some touch-up that I have to do.
Okay, I'll talk to him first.
You were planning on doing a walkthrough anyhow before you even think about paying him anyhow.
Right.
I didn't talk about that.
Thank you, Jim.
One last thing on Dora. Uh, businesses are recording that you handed out notices for Dora?
Yes.
Uh, meeting notices?
Yes.
And who did you hand them up to?
Uh, every business downtown.
Okay, so if they're on Second or Third Street, they didn't get a notice?
No. Did you need a notice? I didn't want to get into your business down at the end, eh?
No, but there's other businesses in town. I just wondered if you gave them to all or if it was just...
No, I thought it was mostly for the businesses downtown.
Okay, so within two blocks, you gave them out?
I gave them on each side of the street, yeah.
Okay. And is that posted yet? That Dora notice, meeting notice?
Posted.
Yes, on the website?
It's not just on the website yet. It will be...
Do you know when it'll be posted?
Probably this week.
Okay, and that includes in the library, town hall, administration office?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad.
One of yours, Kristen.
Um, on that Dora subject, the sheriff said he couldn't be in attendance that day, so he over here as well, just so you know where. Um, we have a third reading of the ordinance tonight, so that can have a vote for passage. We have a second reading of the resolution for the county auditor, and at the last meeting, I stated we can have two readings on it, but it needs to be approved before October first. So, I would request that you waive the third reading so we can get it, um, approved and sent into the county auditor's office. And then, what is the math? Do you... Do you need, um, approval for Tim Dollar Street?
No.
No, okay.
I don't think so, no.
We'll back that up to the deputy here. And, uh, I don't know if there's any questions anybody wanted to ask the deputy before you might have an emergency and have to leave.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's the same people with the wide-open exhaust system that race down Second Street.
Okay.
And by the time they get to my house, they're probably doing close to forty, because I tried it myself. So, by the time they get more than halfway or less than halfway, before they get to Panzi South, South Panzi Lane, they're doing close to forty, and the speed limit is twenty-five. And there are two vehicles that seem to be the most consistent. One is a white... Is it a Dodge? It's a white, two-door, noisy car. And the other one is a dark... I believe it's a Dodge Charger.
Black.
Black, yes.
White Dodge? It's probably a Ford Mustang.
Yeah, I was thinking it was a Ford Mustang.
You're right on the opposite.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out where you...
It's that little one, maybe, opposite.
That's one that I have reported. It's a Ford Mustang. I know. Nothing serious to change.
Okay, so do these vehicles, do the owners live in town? Or do they have...
I think the one lives at the end of my street.
Okay.
I think so.
One second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Which one?
The white.
The white, okay.
And the... At least the resident that answered the door said they would pass on the information that he needs to do something about racing through the village, through the streets.
Yeah.
It's too noisy.
All righty. I'll pass that along. Could he do this?
There's another, uh... It's a van, and I got the first... It's J A Z on the license plate, but I couldn't get the rest of it. And I went around looking for it, but I didn't see it either.
They race around the village as well?
Just so noisy.
Okay.
Just...
Do you know what model it is?
I know it was a van. I didn't see the signature for the brand or the model.
Do you know what color it is?
It's a charcoal gray.
Okay. All righty. I'll pass that along.
There's also, uh, another resident, um, sent me a text or said there's a hairball, and she didn't give me any other information, but that it's loud, and when it makes some kind of gunshots on when they're going through and scares her, and of course, you know, in these days, everything scares us, but...
Right.
Yeah.
I have a question also about golf carts in town.
Yes.
So, I don't... I don't think they're all licensed.
Yeah. Every vehicle on the roadway has to be registered.
I know, but what I'm saying is I don't think they are.
And, yeah, we will keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, thank you.
Make communication to the committee and move on to the report. The reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have the second reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. It's the second reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five. Proceed with the vote.
Just a question before you proceed. The, um, phrase in here that says, "And authorizing necessary tax levies." Do we know which levies those are, Louise?
The street?
That's it?
Street levy and the general fund levy, the two that are attached on here.
Okay. And how much is the total there?
For the general fund, it is forty...
Just a comment, but does everybody have a copy of that?
We were given this two meetings ago, yes.
Okay.
I just keep bringing them back when they're still on the agenda.
Okay.
So, for the general fund, um, it's forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. For the street levy, it's thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
The street levy was originally from what? It might have been before your time, so maybe Crystal knows what the street levy was for.
To take care of the streets.
Paving streets.
Is there a specific project, or it's just maintenance?
Yeah, it's just maintenance.
Just on the...
Here's the maintenance.
Gotcha. And the general fund one?
The general fund is on the property taxes.
Yeah, it's...
Just to add additional taxes or revenue for us to...
Right, that is the only unvoted general fund money we get from the county.
Okay.
Proceed with the vote.
Uh, Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Frank?
Yes.
Jody Downsby?
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Louise Step?
Yes.
Linselvane?
No.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash five.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five. See who the vote?
Martha Franks?
Yes.
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Louise Step?
Yes.
Linselvane?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes for Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five. Now, I have the third reading of Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three, an ordinance amending and establishing pay bands for the Village of Grand Rapids.
I'll make a mo- motion to pass Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second for passage of Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three, an ordinance amending and establishing pay bands for the Village of Grand Rapids. Proceed with the vote?
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Louise Step?
Yes.
Linselvane?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Franks?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash three passes. Move on to unfinished business.
I have something for Louise Andrew and Crystal, but at the last meeting and the meeting prior to that, you talked about the forty-one percent of taxes that were collected. Did you get the report from the auditor? And are you able to speak about it today?
Um, I did get the report from the auditor, and what they gave me the first time was only for the second half of taxes and not the whole year as requested. So, we were, we are around the ninety-five percent received for that. Basically, the general fund money of the resolution we just passed for thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, and if you look at the other years that they gave us, it was ninety-eight percent, ninety-seven percent, ninety-six percent, ninety-five percent. So, we're going down a percent, it appears, each year. We run the numbers. But it is still a better, uh, better outcome. But we were going based on the information that they gave us from the auditor's office. But we have not collected a hundred percent.
And what is it that did you send it out?
What you just got.
Yeah, what's the, what's the point of, I'm sorry, what's the...
She was giving everyone else a copy.
Oh, this was the report?
That you've already been given, yes.
Okay. Where does it say ninety-five percent on it?
You have to do the math.
Okay.
This report doesn't give the detail as the other one did, but the other one was not correct. So...
Is this a new software?
They do have new software, yes, but when Crystal requested the information, they only gave her half your data. And when we questioned it, they said, "No, this is correct". We questioned them twice.
Right.
And it wasn't, I don't think, until you questioned them a third time, that they came back and it was the same day that you had called.
Hey, Chad, I have a question. The railroad tracks, I mean, I know they've always been bad at Wapkaneta and Second, but they are getting, I mean, even going super slow.
Yeah.
Bad. I didn't know if we could send another letter or something.
I can try to send them something. Any new business?
Uh, I have, uh, some new business. So, Rick and I, uh, last Wednesday evening, went to the safety unity, safety committee meeting, safety meeting for the Apple Butter Fest. The Apple Butter Fest committee representatives were there, along with the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and, uh, it was a good meeting. Pretty much everything is, um, the same as usual. They are adding a parking lot out at Ledwig's property across the river. So, that will be different, uh, adding of, uh, another venue to park in. Um, also, the bus transportation is going to be the same. Uh, one thing that was discussed that is a little bit different is, um, they asked about ATVs and golf carts and stuff like that, and it was mutually agreed that, um, for that day, just because those are vehicles and treated as such, I mean, ATVs are not permitted in town anyways on the streets, but golf carts, they had talked about, um, having authorized golf carts only for that day.
Some ATVs? I believe they, I heard through the grapevine that they were requesting some more large vehicles that entrances the block.
That is correct.
As well.
Yep, yep.
They had to get a dump truck in a couple areas and some things set up, so...
I mean, we've had those in the past, but yes, there, there are a couple more locations that they're adding.
Yes.
And we reiterated, um, just the, from a safety standpoint, we had talked about last year at the conclusion of Apple Butter that not all the barricades were up in time and stuff like that. So, hopefully that will be resolved, so...
So, how is the Sheriff's Department or Alzyn Reeves or whomever going to enforce this? Since it's so close to Apple Butter and our residents do have golf carts and a lot of them go down through the alleys and...
Well, they're probably going to ask them not to go through unless they have, uh, authorization of either fire, EMS, Apple Butter Fest Committee, so...
So, it has to be a detailed showing?
Correct.
Okay.
Something, maybe you, somebody driving down through that crowd?
Well, I don't think anybody should drive down through that crowd. We've got cars on the corner of Third and Bridge that have those little tags and they wave them, and they think they can move the barricade and go down Third Street. And I don't even think they should be able to. I mean, but they do.
That's the thing, they're trying to stop. Somebody runs into somebody, it's gonna be...
The first thing they need to do is stop the cars, I think, before the, the golf carts.
Stop them all.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the point, is ours aren't even allowed, so we're not going to allow anything.
I think it's supposed to stop after nine a.m., though.
It is supposed to, but they have people that get out and move the barricades for them.
Oh, okay.
Any other new businesses? Consequences?
Um, our next meeting is on holiday, so it's canceled, correct? So, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the fiscal officer to pay any bills that come due, um, before our next meeting, which is April twenty-seventh, so that we don't incur any penalties.
Oh, September twenty-seventh.
October. Did I say September and not October?
No, you said October.
Okay. No, October.
We have a motion and a second to allow Crystal to proceed with any payments that she might need for, uh, since we're skipping the meeting for a holiday that's coming up for the festival on the thirteenth. So, we need, till the next meeting, we need a...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
October.
October.
Unvote?
Uh, Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Louise Step?
Yes.
Linselvane?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha Franks?
Yes.
Jody Downsby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I also have a comment. Um, I just want to publicly thank Crystal and Chad for all you do for the village. Um, it's, it's commendable and it is much appreciated, your efforts.
That's for sure. About a year ago, we were still cleaning up debris from the windstorm.
Right.
Yeah.
At this time, there's little bits and pieces around. That was quite a bit to go through. We got some nice letters from some people around.
Yes.
Appreciate all the help that you did and worked on and everything else, too.
August twenty-seventh.
A lot of effort from the whole village.
I also want to add that, um, I attended a training with the Wood County Auditor, and I'm not sure if anybody's aware of this, but, uh, they have a, a tool on their website now that gives a levy estimator. Uh, so you enter your property address, and then it will tell you what levies are going to be on the ballot and how much it will actually cost you. Um, I think it's an incredibly helpful tool when you're making decisions about what to pass and what not to. So, it'll show any upcoming levy that would, would affect your property taxes. I encourage everybody to take a look.
And what department is that in?
It's on the Wood County Auditor's website.
Auditor's, okay.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I also have something to say. The, uh, town hall committee, uh, was so happy to see so many council members and you, Mayor, uh, show up Saturday night, and we appreciate, uh, being able to get the hall painted and how nice it looks. So, they just wanted to pass that, the thank you all.
That's fun.
Yeah, it was a good time.
Yeah.
My kind of entertainment.
One of the grain growers that was cleaning up the canal this last, uh, couple days, they've been...
That is a different group.
Different group. Why, just want to thank them for, for picking up some stuff out of there and helping clean it up.